Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 14th session of the Bellingham City Council. We don't have any announcements or any other things going on right now, so we will say that the Bellingham City Council meets all the requirements of the State of Washington Opens Meeting Act. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go call.
Terry Bornhaman.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Gene Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Liloquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Okay, we will now go to our 15-minute public comment period. If Mike would be as gracious to give me the sheet, and I'll call your name. You have three minutes. As you can see, we have the clock there. Also, turn off your cell phones if you have them with you, and I'll make sure mine's off. Okay. Okay, the first three names we have on the list are James, Judy Collins, and Maureen Dunaway.
Church holy Mary, dignify council members and my fellow citizens. My name is James, and I'm a citizen of Bellingham, a registered voter, taxpayer, and homeless combat veteran with 15 years of experience in a homeless community. The issue which I have to educate the city council and the public about is the systemic contributions to homelessness, the core value which drives me to speak to how the system contributes to homelessness is objectivity and the fact that the system-sponsored film project, Homeless in Bellingham, is thus far ignoring the systemic contributions to homelessness in Wacom County. Yesterday at church, one of the leaders spoke about how so many were working to provide emergency shelter and housing for Syrian refugees who are escaping a civil war. I'm well pleased that the world is finally responding to needs of millions of homeless people coming out of Syria. I marvel at the homeless needs here in America that are still not being met, especially the lack of emergency shelter and housing, the very things that the Syrian refugees are now getting. After church, I asked the leader if she would explain to me how it was possible that we are now rushing to provide assistance overseas while we still have so many citizens here in dire need of emergency housing and shelter. The church leader replied that there were members of the church working with the Opportunity Council to provide emergency shelter and housing. Yes, I said, however, in all the years they have been working on these issues, there still isn't enough emergency shelter or housing. Providing adequate emergency shelter is basic homelessness 101. Winter is coming. The church leader remained silent, then walked away. Like many in the community, the church leader seemed to initially think that the Opportunity Council had the lack of emergency shelter taken care of. As hard as the Opportunity Council and others are working to address the need, the fact remains that there isn't enough emergency shelter or housing in Wacom County, and winter is coming. Like housing, emergency shelter is not an entitlement; it is a basic need for a human being to survive. The fact that there is not enough adequate emergency shelter in place which opens at a humane temperature not only is a systemic contribution to homelessness, it might end up being a systemic contribution to the death of a homeless citizen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Judy Collins.
Judy Collins, 210 Horton Road. I apologize, I'm giving you guys more paperwork to look at.
That's all right.
I gave you a packet of some of the stuff that Greg Alcott and Rick Seppler asked for over the last couple of years. On the top is a map of the UGA. Two weeks ago, Mike asked Greg and Rick if my property was anywhere near the existing UGA at the time. Well, he misspoke. As you can see, the UGA, my property, it's right at my property line, so all you've got to do is move the UGA line down 215 feet. One paper you have there is a letter I got a long time ago. I thought it gave me water, but Greg said no. They said if I could give them the information on the Meridian Water Association, I could be grandfathered in. Well, I got a share certificate from my girlfriend that lived where the Walmart is, and I got six people that were neighbors that would come in and vouch for it, but that wasn't enough either. So if anybody out there in TV land knows anything about the Meridian Water Association, please let me know, maybe it might help me. I understand that you don't want to put a water main in 1,500 feet down the Horton Road, but you let others put their own water line down to their houses, so why can't I put mine down there? It's only 1,500 feet from the guide where the lines are. And another thing they said was, oh, well, we don't know where those other three lines are that's going down the road. Well, that's what we got locate for. And I know two out of the three people that are east of me, they know where their lines are, so it wouldn't be too hard to dig in a different spot. So I should be grandfathered in like everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Maureen Dunaway, Joy Gilfillan, and Ray Barbaro.
First, I'll apologize because I'm definitely not prepared. I was on my way home, and I just realized that someone was starting to talk about a sales tax again for this jail, and I haven't been paying attention, unfortunately. I've been raising my kids and running my business, but I thought to myself the last time I voted, or maybe the only time I voted for increase in taxes, was for the mental health tax a number of years ago. And I've been working in our community, I've been working for CAST, it's a homeless outreach program, and I just was there since 4:00 this afternoon making sandwiches and serving them, providing tarps and toiletries and that type of thing. And I was on my way home, and I thought, oh, I can't make this meeting, I'm so tired, and I started praying. And I thought, you know, I just have to say something, you know? I don't know what's happened with that money, but I don't see any difference on the street and in the real life where that money's gone. And now we're talking about building a jail? I'm just thinking to myself, who's thinking up here? I mean, I know you guys are volunteering your time, and I'm grateful, but I don't know what process you guys are all using, but the idea that we need a bigger jail, it's like, aren't we supposed to make people not go to jail? I mean, isn't the whole idea that we want empty jails? I mean, that's what I want. I mean, I've been here for 21 years, I have a business, I'm an employer. I don't want more people in jail. I want our jails empty. So what are we going to do about that? What are we going to do? I mean, it's a real fair question. I think it deserves an answer, and I haven't heard anybody talking about it. So I really hope somebody starts thinking about it, and someone starts talking about it, and we start doing something, because we don't need a bigger jail. We need empty jail. We need those people in our community, not under a bridge, not standing in a line for a cup of noodle soup, right? No, we need them in our community, working, raising their families, paying taxes, you know? Maybe we could even, like, use that tax money for a public restroom, so the people that maybe aren't going to get help can even have a place to go to the bathroom, you know? I just think of all the things we're spending our money on, I see all these green crosswalks. I'm like, how much did that cost? Really? We need to resurface again? How much did that cost? We don't even have a toilet or a shower, you know, for people that don't have a place to live. Shameful. I just think it's shameful. So shame on me for not saying more sooner, but I cannot go to sleep at night knowing that this is going on in my community, and I hope nobody else can sleep tonight, because it's just way over the top not okay. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Joy Gilfillan, Ray Barbaro, and Irene Morgan.
My name is Joy Gilfillan, and in the past, I've spoken frequently on this subject as president of the Restorative Community Coalition. I'm speaking tonight as a candidate for county executive, and I've been looking...
Wait a minute, Joy, that's something you can't do.
Can I not do that?
No, you cannot do that.
Okay, then I will speak as an individual person.
There you go.
I look, thank you.
Yeah, that's...
I looked at the budgets from this report. The Comprehensive Annual Report reported December 2013. I started looking at the last 10 years of what we've been reporting, and it's interesting, and I will submit this to you, that some of the numbers. The average daily population, according to this report, starting in 2004, or 2000, yeah, 2004, was 246 average daily jail population. By 2013, the average population was 258. Yet, when you start looking at a lot of the reports over the last several years, they run all kinds of numbers in front of us, from 300 and some to 403. But this is the audited financial reports. At the same time, our budgets have gone from $5 million for the jail-specific funds in 1998 to 13.6 million in, I'm sorry, it was $5 million in 1998, to 13.6 million in 2015. The projection, if we pass that sales tax, will be at $29.3 million in 2027. If you look at this graph, that is a massive growth in operating costs with not a massive growth in population. This disturbs me as a taxpayer. It also disturbs me when I also look at this same document on page 205, and I notice the rapid growth. We've got over 32.5 increase staff in all the jail, sheriffs, prosecutors, defense, district court, public defenders, 32.5 increase in employees, and a reduction of, let's say, 10 staff from Parks and Rec, 9 staff from health, mental health, a reduction of 14 from planning and development services. This is bad business, folks. We're funding all the stuff that puts people in jail and costs taxpayers more and more and more and more, and we're not funding the stuff that gets people out of jail. This is Wacom County budget stuff. It also concerns me that the city council here is being pressured and bullied into having to pass some kind of an agreement in order for you to house inmates for 2016. The county is out of integrity, in my opinion, as a county that works for the taxpayers, to have been operating an inhumane jail that is unsafe and at risk for catastrophic failure when we have $18.5 million saved for a sheriff's office, and they want you to write an agreement. I think it's a problem.
Thank you, Joy. Michael, can you hit that button?
Good evening. Thank you, council, thank you, mayor. My name is Ray Baraboe. I've been a volunteer in the jail and the work center since 2001. Got over 2,000 hours in those facilities, and I've met a lot of people that have been incarcerated firsthand. One of the things that worries me about legislative bodies locally, statewide, especially in Washington DC, is the law of unintended consequences. Now, I'm going to share something with you tonight that you don't realize if you don't come to an agreement on a facility use agreement, you're going to kick something that's really good to the curb. You heard a wonderful presentation this afternoon about the mental health court. That's a good thing, and I'm glad it exists. I'm also glad that drug court exists. In fact, I went to the graduation a week and a half ago. That's something you can find out from the drug court when it's on their calendar. Attend the graduation. It'll touch your heart, you'll learn a lot. But what I'm going to speak about is jail alternatives. Now, what you heard about this afternoon was jail diversion. Jail alternatives should properly be called sentencing alternatives. It's a tool for the judges to sentence people to something other than incarceration and sitting down. At the work center, we have work release, school release, we have work crew, in addition to the other things you heard about, probation, bail, things like that. If you do not come to an agreement with the county and cannot use their facilities and have to send your misdemeanor offenders out of the county, your misdemeanor offenders will not have the ability to have work crew, work release, or school release. And as someone that has met people that are in those programs face-to-face, week after week, I can see the value of those programs, especially to young people that have never worked a day in their life. On work crew, they get up, clean up, and show up. They learn good habits. The ability to keep and hold your job while you're doing your time, I think, is wonderful. The ability to go to school while you're serving your time, that's a real benefit to the people in our community. Lastly, I want to introduce you to my friend. This is Candace Kennedy. This is the can that's been kicked down the road since 1998. Please don't kick her anymore. We need to do the right thing for our whole community. Please come to an agreement with the county on a jail facility use agreement. Candace will appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The last three names, Irene Morgan, Jeffrey Garrison, and Lynn Barton.
Do you all have, have you all downloaded our report to the taxpayers? Would anyone like a hard copy?
I have one. I do.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Irene Morgan. I founded the Restorative Community Coalition nine years ago. Again, I have been supplied with information from one of our members, again, about ACE studies, the adverse childhood experiences. This article came from Jeff Puhoff from Camden, New Jersey, founder of Hope Works 18 years ago. Here's his quote. "While working with youth experiencing abuse and neglect here in Camden, we created a community of healing and hope. Hope Works is not rooted in shame or blame. Hope is not some pill you take or whimsical ideal. It is a choice to be present, even when the future seems muddled and unsure. Hope is a daily decision to draw near to others who are often in extreme pain and be willing to share that space with them. Sharing the space is the beginning of hope." I believe that this is what we can do here in our county. Create a community of healing and hope, not a community that will build on more arrests and more court appearances to fund a degenerative process that will continue to build on the stresses you are feeling now that you are asked to consider this less-than-ideal package from Executive Louse and Sheriff Elfo. We have wonderful programs already in place here in Wacom County. Let's use the existing $18 million that the sheriff wants to use for his huge headquarters to expand the drug and teen court and our newly formed mental health court. Let's introduce restorative justice as a diversion for misdemeanor offenses and nonviolent offenses instead of jailing folks for six to eight months because they can't make their bail. Let's reduce the artificially high count in the jail now. Let's reduce the crisis of the unsafe jail that is out of compliance with state law now, not four years from now. It is illogical to continue to overcrowd our current unsafe jail and produce this sales tax campaign for the proposed new jail that will, in time, bankrupt our county. When we expand our current programs and implement other programs that are successful from across the nation, like the Restore Life Center that we have in process after Delancey Street in San Francisco, wet houses like Seattle, local substance abuse treatments, treatment centers, true mental health facilities that are fully staffed, we do not need to build an oversized jail outside our county seat. Let me be clear, we need a different, safe, humane jail, not one that is being proposed by our administration. Let's work together with pride, courage, and determination.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jeffrey Harrison? Garrison, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I have a very quick comment and request. Considering the international crisis of Syrian refugees, I think it would be wonderful if this community could create a welcoming atmosphere for resettlement of a certain number of families. Even the Vatican has agreed to two families to handle their needs. This doesn't diminish in any way the homeless needs, which are clearly a problem throughout the country, but Syrian refugees, this is a disaster. And I just read that Bellingham is number 72 in the top 100 communities in which to live. Let's add another star on that tree to reflect what kind of humanity we appreciate here in this community. And I don't have a particular plan. I can see that the faith communities could participate, it wouldn't necessarily have to cost the community any money directly, but just having the philosophy of support of this idea would get national attention, I would think. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Lynn Barton.
Hey, hey, everyone. Good evening. My name is Lynn Barton. I live at 3123 Cherrywood Avenue in the Birchwood neighborhood. I've got a number of things to talk to you about. You're going to see me a lot more. The first thing I want to mention is I've got a parking ticket. I was downtown, I was enjoying myself. I untethered myself to my car, and I went farther than I should have, so I got a ticket. Well, that was the price I paid. But the problem I had with paying it, actually, is that my debit card would not be accepted because it's not a Visa, MasterCard debit card. So I had to go home. I got sidetracked. Took me another couple of weeks to get downtown. I'm sorry, I don't live near downtown. I love downtown, but I didn't get back down there. And so a few more weeks went by, and my point is, it took three tries for me to finally get it paid. And I should have been able to pay it the first time. So please, please, change the system so if a person has a debit card that is not a Visa or MasterCard debit card, they can pay their fines on time the first time they arrive. Yes. Okay. Second thing, as you know, I live at 3123 Cherrywood. Well, there's been a construction project behind my house that ended a couple of years ago that was a pool building right at the five-foot mark of the setback. That is a large garage, and now I have had a two-story house built directly behind my house, kitty corner, with a five-foot setback that is now, as I said, two stories tall, and it has totally taken all of my light from my backyard directly behind my home and my windows. So at 2:30 in the evening, in the winter, I have no more light. You know what that's like here in the Pacific Northwest to not have any light coming into your house? It really s'ses a lot. So, the thing is this, I've gotten a bit active with this process because I think there need to be some changes. I understand the codes. I've been looking at them very carefully from this project. I found out about this project because they broke ground on this project. That's the day I found out about it, so I went down to planning. There were some reinterpretations of the codes to accommodate this particular bailout, as well as keeping the original residents on the lot intact. I'm not at contention with the codes, I'm at contention with the interpretation because there aren't other protections in codes protecting me and my property. So I just, you know, in my lifestyle. So my point is, I would really like for us to sit down and start taking a close look at what's happening in the Birchwood neighborhood, knowing that there will be increased growth, and make it smarter. I have more to say. I'll be back next week.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. We will now go to our committee reports. The first committee on our agenda is Public Works and Public Safety chaired by Terry Bornhaman.
Thank you, Gene. We had two items before our committee...
Time's up, Terry.
Okay, we're done.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we had two items before the committee this afternoon. The first was Woodstock Intersection Improvement and the impacts to Sunset Pond Park. Section 4F of the Federal Department of Transportation Act concerns transportation projects that would use or impact a significant public park, recreation area, wildlife, or waterfall, refuge, or historic site. The Woodstock Intersection Improvement Project is partially funded with federal transportation funds. Sunset Pond Park is considered a 4F property. When federal funds are used for a project, the FHWA and Washington Department of Transportation require that a determination be made for an exemption, a pragmatic evaluation, and approval. WashDOT has developed a form for use by local agencies describing the de minimis exemption which must be documented in the minutes filed within the city's local forum. The project will impact .3 acres of the park. Staff presented the impacts of the project to the council in accordance with Section 4F of the Act. This was for information only. The second item we had before us was a bid award for the Lincoln Street sidewalk improvements, bid number 47B-2015. Western Washington University, the Wacom Transportation Authority, Transportation Improvement Board, and the city of Bellingham have formed a partnership to construct 1,100 feet of five-foot-wide pervious concrete sidewalk along the Lincoln Street frontage of Western Washington University's Lincoln Creek Transportation Center. The sidewalk will be separated from the street with a four-foot landscaping strip with street trees, and will include installation of street lighting. Staff recommends the award of Schedule A to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, favor construction, in the amount of $437,982.97. Engineer's estimate was $318,192. Questions were asked this afternoon about the difference between the amount of the bid and the engineer's estimate. Part of the differences had to do with the installation, the decision to install lighting along there for safety issues. Part of that was paid for with a $50,000 grant from Western Washington University, and part of it is just construction's getting a lot busier right now. Times are picking up, and so bids are coming in higher than they were when we were in downtimes. The committee recommended approval, and I so moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Now go to the planning committee chaired by Jack Weiss.
Thank you, Gene. This afternoon, we had one item. It was a request from the Bellingham School District to initiate a review process for an emergency amendment to the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan to incorporate a new six-year capital facilities plan. The district's request did not come in time to be included in the annual 2014-2015 cycle of amendments, and their capital facilities plan expires at the end of this year. The Growth Management Act limits changes to the Comprehensive Plan to once per year. However, under RCW 36.70A.130A.130, paragraph 2B, an exception is allowed for the governing body to consider amendments outside of the annual docket whenever an emergency exists. The committee went and reviewed this request, discussed the fact that somebody in the school district did not really understand what the rules and the deadlines of the city were associated with docketing plan amendments, and we really felt like we didn't have much choice in the matter. Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of docketing this item for 2015 to be completed by the end of this year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We now go to Lake Wacom Reservoir Natural We now go to Lake Watcom Reservoir Natural Resources chaired by Dan Hamel.
Thank you, Gene. The committee had one item before us today. This is pursuant to the Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention Program Cost Recovery. The Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention Program is a multi-jurisdictional program designed to prevent infestations of invasive species that can compromise essential public infrastructure, lake ecology, recreational activities, and shorelines. At the July 27 council meeting, council requested that a resolution on program fees and cost recovery be discussed at a future work session. Councilmember Weiss drew up a draft resolution, and the recommendation was to adopt the draft language written by Councilmember Weiss into a resolution. The animating components of this resolution would be that the water fund would not be used for AIS program after December 31, 2017, and that it would establish a funding target of at least 45% of the program costs in 2016 recovered from local user fees, and at least 60% of the program costs in 2017 recovered from local user fees, and that requests that the administration work with state officials to seek funding support from boater-related revenue sources, and continue to work to establish a statewide inspection AIS control program to ensure better compliance and lower costs. And also directs administration to provide counsel with a report by April 1, 2016 specifying the details on how and when, or how and what time schedule would be proposed to obtain full cost recovery by program users. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roxanne.
Can I just ask a question? So, is the order that we would look for grant or supplemental funding and then go to the boat folks getting charged? Or is this all happening at once where the boat users would have to immediately pay?
Well, the, so for 2016, they would establish a funding target of 45%. Currently, we're anywhere between 30 and 38%, so it's a modest increase of about 7% to 8%. And then 2017, the proposal contained that the 60% of program costs be recovered by users, so boat users utilizing the lake for recreational activities.
Okay. Pinky.
As earlier, we talked about, I'm in support of these numbers. I'm just not particularly fond of the terminology whereby boat users will provide the majority of funding for the inspection because I think, as we talked about earlier, we need to look for other sources of funding and that it not all be directly put on the boat users.
And to be fair, the resolution, the draft resolution does request that administration work with state officials to seek funding beyond local sources, to seek state funding. Councilmember Weiss brought up during our discussion today that Oregon has roadside, interstate roadside, I believe, inspection programs up and down their interstate system. So, it may not be something along those lines, but something for funding purposes outside of just local dollars and rate payers in Bellingham who are subsidizing this program.
Michael Roy.
Well, I've spoken, and several people have spoken in favor of a statewide program that addresses a statewide problem, but I think the important thing to realize is most states in this state will probably have boaters pay for that. So, it's not a question of finding non-boaters to pay for it. It's usually just done with a state boating license or fee or surcharge to fund a comprehensive program which is cheaper to each individual boater. So, I don't think the idea of charging boaters is inappropriate, but we have to charge them a great deal of money to manage it locally as opposed to a smaller amount if it was managed comprehensively.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. What's that?
I'm wanting to oppose.
Okay, you can. Motion carries 6-1 with Roxanne opposing. I'm sorry, I went too fast. We will now go to Finance and Personnel chaired by Pinky Vargas. Yes. Yes, dear. Go ahead. Just trying to be nice.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Eric, thank you, Mayor.
And we had had some conversation this afternoon about it going to the Lake Watcom Policy Council. Is that still the intent?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that would be, I think that would be a very wise thing to do since we want this to be a lake-wide program.
Yeah. We forgot to mention that, yeah.
I just had a question. Maybe Ted, you might know the answer. When would be the next time that that could actually be scheduled in their agenda?
That is a good question, and I'm not sure I do have an answer to that. I'll work with Mark Garner, and I'll talk to him tomorrow, and we'll bring it back as soon as we can. I don't know if Councilmember Hamel has an idea about that, but I would assume we could get it on in the next one or two meetings from now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, we will go to Finance and Personnel and Pinky Vargas.
Finance Committee had three things in front of us today. The first one, an ordinance amending the 2015-16 adopted budget, increasing revenue in the street fund by $4 million as a result of a $350,000 proceeds from an intergovernmental loan and in an award of $500,000 grant, and appropriating related expenditures in the street fund. The cost is four, the city replacing approximately 3,600 street lights with energy-efficient LED. Yay! The Public Works Department has contracted with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services to hire a pre-qualified company to perform the work. Benefits of LED technology include lower fixture costs, longer warranties, improved nighttime visibility, and energy savings. And the committee unanimously voted to approve. An ISO move.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
The second ordinance in front of us today was also amending the 2015-16 budget, authorizing an inter-fund loan of $1,350,000 from the Solid Waste Fund to the Watershed Fund. There's a $5 million line of credit in the Watershed Fund that has been used to make a land acquisition purchase. The cost of maintaining the line of credit is approximately $28,000 per year, depending on interest rates. This one-year inter-fund loan and reserves of $1,350,000 will be used to pay off the existing line of credit and save the Watershed Fund approximately $22,000 per year in interest and fees at today's rate. And we had unanimous approval from the committee today, and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Last ordinance was approving the advanced refunding of the outstanding 2006 water and sewer bonds. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of water and sewer bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $4,200,000. Bond proceeds are to be used to advance refund outstanding bonds issued in 2006. For the purpose of capturing savings from lower interest rates, the bond will be issued with the same amortization period as the original 2006 bonds and is expected to save in excess of 4% of the outstanding debt, including issuance costs. This ordinance delegates authority to the finance director to negotiate the final terms of the bond with a successful respondent by June 2016. The bonds will be sold to the ultimate purchaser, who submits a proposal that is determined in the city's sole discretion to be in the best interest of the city. The city further reserves the right to reject all bids in its sole discretion. The bond issue will reduce the debt service of the 2,000 water and sewer bonds, and the anticipated savings is approximately $300,000 over the remaining life of the bonds. And committee unanimously voted to approve, and I so move.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. We will now go to Community Economic Development chaired by Michael Lilikwiss.
Thanks a lot, Gene. The committee had two items before us. The first one is an Economic Development Strategic Action Plan. The economic element, sorry, the economic development element of the comprehensive plan was adopted in June of 2013, and Policy ED 6 in that document directed the staff to adopt and periodically review a strategic action plan to define and prioritize actions to achieve the city's economic development goals and policies. The actions in the plan, which we now have before us, support the city's specific role in economic development. The document is not intended to encompass all economic development activity actions carried out by partner agency and organizations, but to focus on what the City of Bellingham does. The document, which looks like this, is very readable and clear. It's in draft form at the moment. I don't know if it's available online yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, but hopefully soon for your review. It's organized into five main program areas. It's really the fulfillment and the realization of the earlier economic development policy statements made by the council. There were some minor changes that staff and the committee talked about making, and so we didn't take any action today, but that will, we did vote to have that come back to the committee as a whole when it's returned by staff to the council, even at the next meeting and the meeting after that. The second item was a North State Street Design Concept. The North State Street Design Concept Report describes a cohesive vision for the corridor that stretches between York Street and the roundabout at War Street, a nine-block segment of the street. The purpose behind creating a design concept for State Street is to help guide future capital improvement projects that collectively will improve connectivity, safety, commercial vibrancy, social activity, and identity placement along the length of this nine-block corridor. This is really a fulfillment of the downtown planning process, where we talked about activating this part of town by making public investments in the streetscape there. It's not a bicycle lane plan, although there is a bike lane. The design builds on a concept developed in 2012 during the downtown master planning process. That report is available. It can be reviewed online at the city's website, cub.org, and then just search for downtown district, the document will come up. It was for information only because, as I said, this is really a guiding document. There's no project at this point. When projects do come forward, they'll sort of be matched to this design concept. The committee.
Thank you, Michael. We now go to the committee as a whole. We had four items, plus we'll have another item tonight. The first item was a presentation of the Mental Health Court and Behavioral Court. Municipal Court Commissioner Pete Smiley and Darlene Peterson and a few other people, I'm sorry I didn't write their names down, they gave a great report this afternoon on what's going on in our Mental Health and Behavioral Court, part of our judicial branch. There were several stories told how people are getting reintroduced into our community after going through, whether it be bipolar, or drug, or alcohol abuse. It was really a great, great presentation, and I urge you to watch it tomorrow at noon on Channel 10. It'll be repeated again as the afternoon session goes on because it was really a great report. It was for information only, but they come to us every year and give us a report on how things are going. We're not back to the level we were back before the Great Recession hit, but we're getting there. The next is a consideration of the Consent Decree for Eldridge Municipal Landfill Site. I'm not going to go over the summary statement. We've been talking about this for a long time, and it's really great that we're actually getting things cleaned up, and it's long overdue. So, I'm just going to read that on September 27, 2010, we authorized the mayor to enter an agreement to amend agreed order to perform interim action 1213, 2010, 423, 2012, authorizing, entering into remedial action grant agreements with the Department of Ecology. There will be several citizen get-togethers, and I think the first one will be next Monday night, the 21st. And somebody remind me where it's going to be. It's probably on the report somewhere here. Oh, here it is. It doesn't say it. It's a public comment, oh, public comment, the 21st of September to October 2, 2015. No, I think you're going to have to enter your, it's just a comment period, so you've got to enter your comments online, which is wwwecy.wa.gov/programs/tcp. So, that'll be on there from September 21st to October 2nd for comments, but it's really great that we're getting this far. The committee recommends approval on the consent decree, and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. The next item is the proposed jail facility use agreement that was discussed last Wednesday night. The council met, the five of us were there from 6:00 PM until 7:40. So, Peter, do you want to begin this?
Sure.
For the mayor, you want to start before he starts?
No.
Okay. Peter, you start then.
Peter Raffato, Legal Department. So, what I would do is referring to the Agenda Bill 20959 and following the numbering in the revised packet. So, basically, following the city council meeting, I took the motion and the changes that were moved on during that meeting and made changes in the agreement, and I highlighted those, and I can just highlight those.
On page 102?
So, yeah, starting on page 102, recital C, and this is where it states now that the county intends to build, own, and operate a new jail located on La Bounty Road in Ferndale consisting initially of a maximum of 450 beds, and that's defined as Phase 1, with an additional number of beds in Phase 2. So, that was to address council's concern, to put some amount in there. It's subject to negotiation, and we get to that later in the agreement. The next change is on page 105 of the packet. In the top paragraph, it's paragraph 3 that starts in the previous page, and you'll see the number there, and this is the initial payment that Bellingham would start making in 2016, and that initial payment is $800,000 annually into the new jail construction fund. The reason that number changed is we made an estimate. Brian Hinshaw looked into it. So, if we do reduce the bed capacity to 450, we reduced the total cost correspondingly, and then the annual payment likewise. Which brings us to the next change, which is on page 106. B, you can see there that the estimated total cost, and again, I'm sure there'll be some discussion about this, is now $80 million. And then the most substantive provision, still in B on that same page, is it provides that the county must obtain written approval from Bellingham prior to constructing any jail beds beyond Phase 1. Again, it doesn't say this, but Phase 1 is defined as 450. That's specified earlier. And that's in the event the county seeks capital contribution from Bellingham for such construction. Prior to such written approval, Bellingham's obligation to fund 50% of the construction is limited to a maximum build-out of 450 jail beds. Then it provides that if the county seeks to construct additional jail beds beyond Phase 1, Bellingham and the county shall meet and negotiate in good faith regarding the appropriate number of additional jail beds to be constructed. During such negotiation, the parties shall consider factors such as the likely impact of diversion and prevention practices and programs, economies of scale, jail operational efficiency, and all other relevant factors. And the only thing I would say is that nothing substantive, but I have been going through and making some really minor revisions to make sure all the language is consistent. You know, we made changes to Exhibit B, significant changes, not since the last meeting, but not since Wednesday, but prior. And before we send it over to the county, I want to make sure it's as clean as possible.
And when would that be? If we do move it tonight, when would you be sending it over there? Tomorrow? They do meet tomorrow night, so.
We haven't talked about that.
Okay.
Do you have a preference?
Probably get it to them if you can by tomorrow night's meeting, I would suggest, if that's possible.
Oh, and there is one other provision.
Is it my?
Yeah. Do you want to talk about that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
There's one more.
Oh, sorry about that.
Sorry. So.
Hey, you didn't want to talk. What are you talking about?
Page 108. And so, the mayor mentioned this during Wednesday's meeting, and it was, I think, the intent here, and we're still working a little bit with wordsmithing, but it's really demonstrating the commitment to adopting the recommendations for misdemeanances that are made by the county ordained Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. And then, as specified here, we inserted that any fees for such services would be consistent with the terms of this agreement. And I think what we need to talk about is sort of the scope of this agreement. As it stands, this agreement is focused on jail, you know, the jail administration. So, again, some prevention programs may be totally outside of the jail. again, some prevention programs may be totally outside of the jail, obviously will be outside the jail, some may be in jail alternatives, but we have a little work to do, but the mayor may have more to say in terms of the intent there.
Okay, go ahead.
The, just the idea that we, if, if this goes to the ballot and if it is successful, that part of the utilization of funds, I believe, should be for the recommendations that are coming out of the, the task force. And as Peter said, this is about the jail use agreement, but, so I, I understand, we might not be able to say it as strongly as I'd like to say it, but I want it to be part of what, what we're sending to the county, just because I don't want it to get lost somewhere.
Okay, Dan.
Just before we enter any substantive discussion regarding this proposal, I just want to point out, page 104 in your red line, item 2, there's a, there's just a mistake in here that needs to be corrected, towards, towards the end of the red line, and the parties shall, it says executive a contract, I believe it should be execute a contract. Sorry. Copy editing skills.
Okay, council, what are your wishes? We discussed this at length last Wednesday night, we moved it to here, go ahead, oh, Pinky, I'm sorry.
I just have a question. I'm just wondering if we're going to have a representative, if we're bringing this to county council tomorrow, that will present and just do the highlights of, or if we're just bringing it over in a written form, I'm just curious what kind of format. I know we just asked you to do it, but I'm just curious how that would happen.
Well, I think someone from the city should be present. Some of it is based on what the county council would like us to do. Obviously, it's their meeting, so if you want to give me some direction, I'm open to that.
You could present it, if you don't mind.
I think I'd.
Or PU and Peter can go.
I, I'd be happy to go. I think it would be good if Peter would go too.
Okay. Terry?
Well, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, I mean, long time, a lot of discussion amongst all of us, with county council members, with county executive, others, and I'm willing to move approval of the, of this document, and.
Okay.
So I'll, and I'll speak later.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made, seconded, under the discussion, Dan.
I just want to point out that City of Bellingham has made substantial concessions in this proposal, including, the proposal is, the funding source is sales tax, two-tenths of 1%, it's not property tax, which is the preferred method by many on council and, and our executive. That is a, that's a significant concession, I want that to be on the record. The other piece that I feel is, is substantial is the 15% agreement. Historically, the Bellingham's use fluctuates up and down, it's been as low as 10%. I believe that with the successive programs, like the Wellness Court that was presented to us today, and other diversion and alternative sentencing programs and treatment programs, that that number, the fif, the, and it's actually 13.44%, that is our actual use, so we are giving a little bit away here, but I believe that that number, the 13.44% can come down to be around 10% or perhaps even less if we're successful with these programs. I do, I do want to point out that that, those two are, those are two major concessions that the city is making in this proposal. Thanks.
Okay, Pinky?
Just a couple other things. I, I really appreciate all the work that has gone into this, and I must say that the staff has done an extraordinary job of mining through the details of the things that we realized that we would have been obligated to pay for. So with the concessions we made, I also think that we've done a great job of showing equitability and separating the operational costs from the capital costs was a huge, huge success in, in my eyes for us to be able to address that, so I really appreciate the work you did on that. And also, one other thing that we might not have mentioned, but our proposal also says that this City of Bellingham will not pay for the demolition of the old jail, which we believed was no benefit for the city, that that should be a county cost. So that is another thing that was put in this contract, and I really appreciate the efforts. Thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, this isn't, I don't think, a perfect document. If I was designing it and designing the program and, you know, had that power to do it, it would look much different than this, but I think we all are giving up some in terms of what we want, but I think this is, the staff's done a good job of outlining the financial elements that is a much better deal for the city and much closer to where we were. I very much want to be able to support a ballot initiative this fall for this, so I'm very much hoping if we approve this and send it across, that it's going to be accepted. Because I really, you know, I, we need, this is a full county operation, and we need to be some unified on this. For this to pass, it needs to be unified, and so I really hope this will be looked at in good faith and that we can pass this together and get on board and get a new jail built, because we really need one. And so I will leave it at that.
Michael?
Thanks, Sheen. Every few months, we have a vote like this, a vote which is significant and difficult because it's complicated and all the pros and cons aren't on, you know, neatly divided up. My guiding principles all along is that we need a jail that's no bigger than we need and no bigger than we can afford, and that is strongly linked with programs and efforts to reduce unnecessary incarcerations, which further saves costs and also helps save lives. Compared to how the document first came forward, I think it's much, much closer to that goal. We're talking about a smaller jail, a jail that is more in line with current jail use and current projections on the increase in the jail population, but still recognize that we're going to be working on keeping that number down. In addition, the county has made commitments, and we've reiterated them now, thank you, Mayor, for adding that language, that the county, the city will support the recommendations of that jail alternatives and diversion task force. We can hopefully save enough money in operations and on the jail that there'll be room in our budget, room maybe in a sales tax, room in the county's budget to support those programs. So the success story we heard this afternoon on the mental health court will be a bigger story, and we replicated. This is not the best arrangement, in my opinion. It's not the one I would have chosen. I advocated for an alternative. It was an alternative that was suggested months ago and rejected. I was hoping it could have been taken back up again. It's cleaner, it's neater, it gives the county autonomy, it gives them larger borrowing capacity, creates room in our budget. I really liked it, but that's not the proposal before us. One of the main things we've been pushing back on has been the fairness of this financial arrangement, and I don't, I don't, what I hear when I talk to people in the public is they don't quite understand what the city was upset about. I don't think the message got out, maybe it's a little bit too wonky, too detailed, whatever, but it was financial fairness and equity which was really bothering us, and that has been largely addressed in this. As I think several of you said, there are concessions in here that the city has made. We've made compromises, and it will require some compromises on the part of the county as well, and they may need to go back and adjust their agreements with the smaller cities. My understanding is that many of those smaller cities wouldn't have a problem adjusting their agreements. I think we can align, but we haven't given the county the easiest job, and I think we need to realize that. If the two-tenth sales tax is passed, and if you add that to another one-tenth sales tax that's already being levied by the county, and then mix in some of the one-tenth that's being levied right now for the mental health tax, I'm hoping, and I believe it should be enough, to pay for the new jail we need, the new jail we can afford, and also all the other programs, treatment, prevention, reentry support, alternatives in diversion, all those things need to be included. That's what I want to see happen. I think we've crafted an agreement that will allow that to happen, and though it's not quite the plan I would want, I will definitely support passing it over to the county and hopefully the county council can reach the same conclusion, and that we can then move this forward to the voters, because after all, November's the voters who will decide whether or not this two-tenth is needed for the jail, and whether or not we have a good plan for spending that money wisely.
Okay. Roxanne?
I just want to say, we have fought long and hard about this, especially to represent so many divergent values in relation to building a jail, not building a jail, getting treatment and diversion, and so many different priorities. And to me, this is my time for my warrior days with this to come to an end. And so I will be supporting this, because I think now is the time that we need to send this back to the Waukam County side of the House, and then also that it can be known that Bellingham is not holding up this process. We just had certain demands that we wanted to, I wanted the county to listen to our demands, so these are going to be made evidently clear, we're, we're not holding anything back. But now, more importantly, it's the voters' time to speak your voices. I don't want you to think that just because we're supporting this proposal that will go to the county, that it's the end of you having a voice. Use your voice, get your community together to do whatever you want it to do in relation to this proposal. So I'll be proposing it to put the power in your hands.
Okay, thank you. Let me also say to thank Terry for asking Executive Lous at our last meeting if we send you something, will you negotiate with us? He said he would, so here we go, and we'll see what happens. I want to thank you for that. I didn't want to put you on the spot, I can't be there tomorrow night, I would, I would love to go to the county council meeting. Anybody that wants to go is free to go, and I'll, yes, sir?
Well, I think there's a process issue, because the county council doesn't have this issue on its agenda, and whether or not.
Oh, well, but she can present it, they can present it, well, that's.
I don't know, maybe Rod could speak to that.
Well, and, and that's why I, I left the determination up to the county council.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Okay.
I, we can talk to them tonight or tomorrow and see if there's an opportunity or how they'd like this to unfold.
Okay, I'm sure that can be worked out. So it's been a long road, but hopefully this is the beginning of something that will work out for everybody. Okay, Terry made the motion and Pinky seconded. All those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Executive session, we had one executive session, item Hollier versus City of Bellingham, staff provide information on litigation matter. At this time, I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with the following terms, dismissal of the lawsuit and resolution of all claims related thereto for the payment of $22,500 to the plaintiff.
I so move?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0. Mayor's report.
The mayor has some, two informational and one approval appointments. I am appointing Trula Nichols, Nicholas, Nicholas, and Jessica Brown to the Community Development Advisory Board, just for your information. And I am appointing Alice Schohanek to the Lake Waukam Watershed Advisory Board, which it needs your approval.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded?
I have one more.
Oh. Miss, you skipped one?
I missed, yeah, I skipped one.
Yeah, we'll go back to that other one in a minute.
The MNEC one?
Yeah, second one.
It is the, the mayor's, that was, this is for information also, this is the mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission, Stephanie Twyford as Bruchwood's representatives, Diane McLean as Edgemore representative, Jim Brennan as Barclay Neighborhood representative, Jeanette Kaiser as Columbia Neighborhood representative, and Joe Timmons as the WWU Administrative Representative. So those are all for your information, and then I'd just like to take a point of personal privilege.
Okay, let me go ahead and vote on the last one, mayor's appointment of Alice. Did you get the first and second on that one, Elizabeth? Okay, boy, you are quick. Maybe we should change seats, huh? Okay.
She could change for me.
Yeah, no, don't take a vote, no vote will be taken at this time, yes. Well, the minutes were done this afternoon, there was no evening minutes. Where?
I have some.
Is there really?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, it's right in front of me here. Okay, let's vote on this, then we'll go back to that. All those in favor of the motion for the Walker, Waukam Watershed Advisory Board, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries 7-0, okay.
Sheen, I move approval of the August 31st meetings of the Bellingham City Council.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any discussion or corrections or acknowledgement of receipt of minutes or whatever you want to, okay. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries 7-0. Now, older new business or anything under older new business?
Mayor.
Mayor, go ahead.
You're back to me.
Yes.
First of all, I've noticed something that's been happening on the council that I very much appreciate, and that is your acknowledgement of how hard our staff works on a multitude of projects, and they do it without expecting any thanks or any acknowledgement or any appreciation, because that is their job, but I think the council has been very respectful in acknowledging those actions that they take on your behalf and on the behalf of the citizens. So I wanted to make that point publicly to you and tell you how much I, I know it means to them and how much I appreciate that we all understand, that it's like the school secretary can't be gone, everybody else can go, and in that, in this case, it's the staff at the City of Bellingham can't be gone, and so I, I appreciate that very much. And I hardly ever take time to say, to, to acknowledge the same thing, so I'd like to go through about six things that the staff has accomplished this summer, just because you already know, you've heard about them, but I want to make sure I say it in public, for the public to know too. First of all, thanks to the Parks and Recreation Department for opening the trail at, at the Breakwater. Short as it may be, I still love it. Thank you to the Samish Way team for the smooth closure of the Aloha and the relocation of the residents that were there. That team includes the Public Community and Development Department, legal, public works, and police.
It looks better even with a fence around it.
It, it does. The Downtown Partnership and Sustainable Connections worked with the Community and Economic Development, Community Development Department and Public Works on the activities in Maritime Heritage Park, so we had that summer music series. I hope some of you were able to attend. The waterfront team needs a big thank you, in addition to Port and the Corps of Engineers and Ecology on beginning the cleanup of the Waukam Waterway. Soon as that cleanup is done, then we can start our park development and the work on our roads down there. And last Friday, we had a very, well, two Fridays ago, a very exciting event happened as a result of the Kapow event at the Matt Baker Theater. We went from a Kapow event to an actual night market down at the commercial parking structure, and a light show at Faith Life, and vendors did very well. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody, because you, you went by that event, or if you were down in that event, and that's the kind of lively downtown we want to see all the time. And then the last thing is, I didn't have anything to do with this, nor I don't know if the city did, but there was a jazz, jazz festival or a jazz thing in Michael's neighborhood last Saturday night, and you just had to drive through Fairhaven, and it was music, and it was people, and that's what Bellingham's all about. So I just wanted to say I'm very proud to be part of our city government, I hope you are, and our employees make all of these things possible.
Thank you. Jack?
Kind of adding on to that, it's, it's not just the department heads that have been doing incredible work or, or mid-management, it's also kind of the workers out in the field too, and I've had, this afternoon, I had a great experience bumping into a guy who was doing the maintenance work on the Squalicum Creek ballfields as I was. maintenance work on the Squalicum Creek ball fields as I was walking back home from the afternoon meeting. Bumped into him, and, and he doesn't know who I am, but he was just so proud of the work that he was doing. And he was talking about, you know, the things that he's making sure that the field was just perfect and, you know, trying to get everything just right. And we had a great discussion. And, you know, it wasn't just him, but I bumped into another Parks guy a couple months ago talking about cleaning up homeless camps and the type of work that, that he was doing. You know, it's just, it, it is up and down the, the ladder as far as our staff is concerned, that we've, we've got a very good work crew of people that, that make the city run.
And just, just so you know, when I say staff, I mean all of our, I mean all of our employees because I think that our employees are the most valuable asset we have in the city. So thank you, Jack, for making sure that that went, went said.
Well, a ship needs a captain, and the captain of this ship's doing pretty good too, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
No, that's not a joke, that's true. Okay, anything else under old or new business? Pinky.
I just want to say that the city last Thursday had a great day towards our progress in the Georgetown University Energy Prize. In partnership with Sustainable Connections, the City of Bellingham, City of Anacortes, and PSE, we were awarded a grant from the Northwest Clean Air Agency for $150,000. This is huge for us. This will allow us to provide education, marketing, and do some real multifamily projects. So yay Georgetown University, thank you Northwest Clean Air Agency.
Okay, anything else? Consent agenda.
Approval.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 7-0. The next meeting of the Bellingham City Council will be September 28, 2015. Meeting adjourned.